I would like to call to order the regular board meeting of Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. As is our custom, we begin our board meeting with the singing of our national anthem. We're very honoured today to have a pre-recorded video of Grade Two students from Mackenzie Lake singing "Oh Canada". I would ask everyone to please stand and follow the lead of the students.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us, gentlemen. With glowing hearts we see the rise of a true more strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand our guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand our guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand our guard for thee.
We would like to acknowledge the traditional territories and oral practices of the Blackfoot Nation, which include the Siksika, the Pikani, and the Gai'ana. We also acknowledge the Sutena and Stony Nakota First Nations, the Mateen Nation Region Three, and all - is committed to the ongoing work of truth and reconciliation. In recognition of the National Indigenous Peoples' Day, each of our schools will reaffirm their individual commitment to action in support of truth and reconciliation. We'd like to acknowledge the Indigenous elders and knowledge keepers and community members who've supported this work and look forward to moving together, forward together in a good way. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome all of our staff and public in attendance. Representing our stakeholder group, I would like to recognise Bob Cawking from the Alberta Teachers Association Local 38. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Ms. Minor, do you have any changes that need to be noted?
Madam Chair, the following agenda change request has been received: that Item 9.1.1 OE5 Financial Planning be removed from the consent agenda and added as Item 8.2 under Matters Reserved for Board Decision and the remaining items to be renumbered accordingly.
Could I have a motion that the agenda be approved with the proposed changes? Trustee close? Thank you. Those in favour of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Next on our agenda is the annual monitoring of operational expectations nine facilities. Last week trustees had the opportunity to ask questions regarding the report. The report is now on the agenda for the board to consider whether the chief superintendent is in compliance with the provisions of OE9 facilities. Let me remind the board that the purpose of considering this report is to satisfy the board that its policy values are being complied with. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report? Trustee May?
That the Board of Trustees approves that the chief superintendent is in compliance with the provisions of OE9 facilities with the exception of indicator 9.2.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves that the chief superintendent is in compliance with the provisions of OE9 facilities with the exception of indicators 9.2.1. Trustee May, would you please open debate?
So I'm happy to move this motion. There are significant indicators that ensure our facilities are safe, clean and well-maintained. There were a few items of non-compliance, one being 100% of emergency and maintenance repair work is acted upon within 24 hours. We did have a 99.92 response rate, which is still impressive considering it was a pandemic year and staffing was fluctuating. The second non-compliance was achieving lead silver or higher with Air Carby School. I think it is disappointing this was not accomplished and I'm hopeful that any new school builds and modernisations have this focus and functions in place to ensure a minimum, at minimum, silver is achieved. I'm as pleased as the amount of naturalisation activities happening in our schools that support outdoor exploration, learning and community gathering spaces. While there were a few indicators that were non-compliant, facilities was required to shift and be flexible during a 2020-21 pandemic year. Many indicators in OE9 are a large board priority item such as a three-year capital plan and modular classroom plan, which are so important to be responsible stewards of our resources. I would encourage my fellow trustees to vote in favour of the motion.
Trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Trustees wishing to enter or re-enter for a second round of debate? Trustee May, do you wish to close?
Nothing further to add, thank you.
Okay, I'll call the question. Those in favour of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Are there any additional motions on this report? Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you Chair. That commends the chief superintendent for in ensuring that CBE facilities continue to be safe, clean and properly maintained while also ensuring COVID-19 pandemic provincial requirements were met or exceeded.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the board commends the chief superintendent for the exemplary performance in ensuring that CBE facilities continue to be safe, clean and properly maintained while also ensuring COVID-19 pandemic provincial requirements were met or exceeded. Trustee Dennis, would you please open debate?
Thank you. Maintaining our schools safe and properly is a priority to this. Hello, all right, perfect, thank you. All right, maintaining our schools so that they are clean, safe and properly maintained is a priority of the board and the chief superintendent has met the expectations of this requirement, all while also addressing the additional demands brought on by a global pandemic. Even preparing our schools and other facilities to welcome students for 2020-21 was a monumental task. Facility staff coordinated and executed functions that included the ordering and installation of plexiglass screens, stickers for the floors to remind and encourage staff and students to maintain social distancing, the taping off of drinking fountains, the procurement and installation of hand sanitiser and hand sanitising stations, procurement and management of cleaning supplies effective against the spread of COVID, signage to support COVID-aware traffic flow in hallways and mask reminders, and throughout the year had to manage the repair and replacement of said items. Staff also ensured ventilation systems were working at optimal capacity, facilitated wastewater testing to support data collection around the spread of COVID-19 and rapid response cleaning team went out to the schools where COVID had been identified in classrooms to ensure those classrooms were fully cleaned and sanitised and ready to welcome students once again. And further to that, repeated high-touch point cleaning took place every day. And that is a lot of doorknobs, door handles and light switches. And as Superintendent Breton shared last week, CBE schools were subject to regular inspections by AHS and Occupational Health and Safety Officers. Our success was noted by Alberta government staff that CBE buildings were a pleasure to inspect, first because there was confidence that all protocols are being adhered to and should any deficiency be found, that change would be swift and consistent across the entire system. That is no small task when you consider the number of buildings we have and the number of staff that carry out and support the work of ensuring our schools are clean, safe and well-maintained. And all of this on top of the work that was already expected. The consistent cleaning and maintenance of our buildings is a significant task on its own, but the degree of coordination and commitment required to maintain our schools throughout a full year of COVID-19 is commendable. Thank you.
Trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Trustee May, go ahead.
So as trustees, we monitor results and operational expectations through mutually agreed-upon indicators. I struggle finding where they meet or exceed provincial COVID guidelines in the presented report. That being said, the pandemic was unforeseen and the system made many adaptations in short notice and guidelines were continually changing. I do appreciate the thoroughness of opening debate identifying the work that took place in our schools to keep students and staff safe. I will be supporting this motion.
Any other trustees for first round of debate?
I'll enter here. The 2020-2021 school year was exhausting, ever-changing, challenging, stressful, tumultuous, lonely, overwhelming, draining. I don't know if there's one word that I could use to describe how tough it was. I know how much hiring had to happen to increase surface cleaning when the province mandated that. Our admin relied on provincial direction as none of them are health experts, viral or transmission experts, or even disease specialists. I do struggle with the continued to be safe with this accommodation. So much changed that year to compare it equally, I feel is disingenuous. When there were thousands of kids who did end up with COVID last year who were our CBE students, not to mention the staff. Did all those transmissions happen in school? No. But the virus didn't stop at the door and say, "Not entering here." I want to point out the good things though. Although this wasn't just facilities who made this decision, I want to applaud all of our administration for going above and beyond when they declared that masks would be mandatory for all staff and students at the beginning of the year. It wasn't an easy decision, but looking back, I believe it was the right one. It helped ensure equal access to schools while no one had access to vaccines for protection. And I will go off a trustee Dennis's Swiss cheese analogy that slices have holes in them, but the more layers that we add, the better protection. And for what we knew at the time that was distancing, surface cleaning, washing hands, masks, ventilation and increasing our runtimes on HVAC to before and after staff and students were in the building. All of this and the extra costs it took as well as the flexibility to ensure a mandate can be continued, which is ultimately to educate. Throughout everything, learning continued. So thank you to our administration, staff, teachers and families. This was a massive team effort. Although the commendation was a bit of a stretch for me, it doesn't perfectly match. Under OE9 facilities, I do feel that recognition needs to happen somewhere and will support this motion today. My fellow trustees do the same.
Trustees for first round? Anyone wishing to enter or re-enter for second round of debate? Trustee Dennis, will you please close?
Thank you Chair. Well, I would agree that COVID-19 isn't specifically mentioned in this report. It's an undeniable, undisputable fact that it existed and it changed the way we had to operate our schools. It changed the way we needed to support learning and specifically doing our very best to make sure that our schools were safe and clean and well-maintained. And our facility staff went above and beyond what is normally expected to a point where they did maintain our buildings to a level of excellence that I would say probably would rival any other location, even our personal homes. So I'm looking forward to my colleagues supporting this motion of commendation.
I'll call the question. Those in favour of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Next on our agenda is the annual monitoring of operational expectations five financial planning. Last week trustees had the opportunity to ask questions regarding the report. The report is now on the agenda for the board to consider whether the chief superintendent is in compliance with the provisions of OE5 financial planning. Let me remind the board that the purpose of considering this report is to satisfy the board that its policy values are being complied with. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report? Trustee Bukadinevich?
I would like to move that the board approves that the chief superintendent is in compliance with the provisions of OE5 financial planning.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the board approves the chief superintendent is in compliance with the provisions of OE5 financial planning. Trustee Bukadinevich, would you please open debate?
After the provincial government made a sharp cut to the CBEs per student funding in 2019, the chief superintendent had to make do with a budget that lagged behind our needs by millions of dollars. Yet despite this considerable cut in provincial funding, this report provides me with the evidence I need that the chief superintendent exercised prudent financial management and planning in the 2020-21 school year. I urge my fellow trustees to vote in favour of this motion because this report demonstrates that financial planning decisions at the CBE are guided by a commitment to run a world-class education system that is not only among the best in the world, but also among the most efficient, effective and economical in Canada.
Trustees wishing to enter for first round of debate? Call for second round of debate? Trustee Bukadinevich, do you wish to close?
I do, thank you Chair Hack. I urge my fellow trustees to vote in favour of this motion because this report demonstrates that the CBE's chief superintendent is prudent in planning for and managing the CBE's finances. As a school board, we are maximising dollars to support teaching and learning in the classroom. This report demonstrates to me that our chief superintendent is directing our funding where it will have the greatest impact for student success and that he is ensuring that at the CBE, we are achieving strong student outcomes while living within our means.
I'll call the question. Those in favour of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Are there any additional motions on this report? Trustee Dennis?
Thank you. Let me all try this one again and see if it stays on. All right, that the board commends the chief superintendent for... No, it's not gonna work, okay. All right, thank you. Again, that the board commends the chief superintendent for exemplary performance in financial management by creating and managing a budget that does not materially deviate from the budget.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the board commends the chief superintendent for exemplary performance in the financial management by creating and managing a budget that does not materially deviate from the budget. Trustee Dennis, would you please open debate?
Yes, thank you. The Board of Trustees has set a very high standard and that, by that I mean a low threshold for variance for variances from the budget. This commendation is not about achieving a balanced budget. Every school board in the province is required to submit a balanced budget. This commendation recognizes the outstanding achievement in not only meeting the board's expectations, but doing so with a mere 0.17% variance. That is remarkable. Financial planning for a system of this size is complex enough for when, in the most part, we know what to expect. And in a very large, or sorry, in a very average school year, this accomplishment would be worthy of commendation. But in 2020-21, it was not an average school year. It was marked by the uncertainty and relentless demands of a global pandemic. We came through a year where working, learning, and teaching changed. We learned that COVID-19 was expensive and unpredictable, and neither of those things makes staying on target with our budget easy or automatic. This achievement is a testament to the caliber of leadership we have in finance and the bench strength of the small but mighty team. This success does not happen by accident. This degree of accuracy requires the ability to forecast with skill, to train and proactively support staff and to have effective monitoring in place to catch issues before they happen. And this takes the support of everyone. It doesn't just happen downtown. This degree of success requires the diligence of all staff in the CBE and a daily commitment to act with prudence in all decision-making.
Trustees wishing to enter first round of debate?
I'll enter first round and just ask my fellow board members to also support this motion. It's hard to argue facts and figures, and this motion speaks directly to a percentage.
Any trustees for second round of debate? Trustee Dennis, will you please close?
Yes, thank you. I'd also like to extend a word of thanks to the CBE's Audit and Risk Committee. The wisdom and expertise these volunteers bring to the CBE is invaluable in supporting the board in our financial oversight, so thank you to them. So I look forward to my colleagues supporting this motion of commendation.
Call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Next on our agenda is Item 8.3, 2022-23: Monitoring Adjustments to Results 3: Citizenship, Results 4: Personal Development, and Results 5: Character. Chief UC, will you please introduce the report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Trustees, if you'll indulge me, before I introduce the report, I just wanted to, first of all, thank the board for acknowledging the tremendous work and commitment of staff across the system. As trustees are aware, next Tuesday is the final day of school in our system. And it goes without saying that the last two years, and certainly this school year, has been real challenging. And thank you, Madam Chair and trustees, for acknowledging the tremendous work and effort that happens each day in the system. This system is a strong system because of the people who walk in the system. So I wanted to take this opportunity to extend my appreciation to our leaders, principals and APs, teachers, support staff, directors, area office staff, all the folks in our service units, directors and superintendents, folks who walk day in and day out to make the system move forward. And lastly, I just want to thank the Board of Trustees for your steadfast commitment to our students, staff, and families, because this work is significant, and it's a pleasure to be part of this. So, Madam Chair, at this time, I'd like to introduce the 2022-23 Monitoring Adjustments to Results 3, 4, and 5. Starting in August and September of this year, teachers will implement the new kindergarten to Grade 3 English Language Arts and Literature, kindergarten to Grade 3 Mathematics, and kindergarten to Grade 6 Physical Education and Wellness Curriculum. This report is before the board today because implementation of a new curriculum includes new learning for teachers and the need to fully understand the implications of new outcomes as they relate to results reporting. Seven of the eight indicators tied to the monitoring of Results 3, 4, and 5 includes report card results. By removing the requirement for teachers in kindergarten to Grade 6 to report on results in the 2022-23 school year, this would allow teachers the opportunity to focus on curriculum implementation and measured adjustments to required reporting. Trustees will note that we are proposing that Indicator 1 of Policy 4.5 be adjusted to account for the fact that L will no longer be a separate course in kindergarten to Grade 6. This proposal is merely intended to align to the structural change in curriculum. At this time, Madam Chair, we'll be happy to respond to your questions. Thank you.
Do trustees have any questions or comments on their report? Trustee Bukadinevich?
Yes, through the chair, I'm wondering why are we only suspending this for K to 6 and not suspending it for all applicable grades? I'd prefer to see it suspended for all applicable grades, so why isn't the recommendation asking for it to be suspended for all grades?
Through the chair, the reason why the recommendation has come forward focusing on K through 6 is because implementation of new curriculum is only applied to those specific grades. As such, any other adjustments related to any other indicators that apply outside of those grade levels were not included as part of the analysis or rationale as to why we would propose suspending monitoring of those particular indicators in that way.
Trustee Bukadinevich?
So I was also wondering why the motion contains an exception for Results 4 and why we're not suspending the inclusion of Section 4.5 indicators.
Through the chair, the shift to, or the recommendation to change that particular indicator is solely to reflect that health is no longer reported individually, but is now made part of physical education and wellness. And reporting on achievement of students related to physical education and wellness according to new curriculum will still occur. So we've adjusted the naming of the course in the recommendation and the monitoring, and maintain that you would still receive reporting around the achievement of those particular course outcomes as per past practice, but solely focused on the adjustment to the curriculum, curricular name of that specific course.
Trustees, are there any other questions or comments? Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report? Trustee Close?
Thank you. Should I just do one at a time? The first one is that the Board of Trustees suspends the inclusion of any indicators for Results 3: Citizenship, Results 4: Personal Development, and Results 5: Character related to kindergarten to Grade 6 school report cards for the 2022-23 school year, with the exception of Results 4: Personal Development, Section 4.5. There's an "and" there, but that's the next.
Do the trustees have any questions about this motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees suspends the inclusion of any indicators for Results 3: Citizenship, Results 4: Personal Development, and Results 5: Character related to the kindergarten to Grade 6 school report cards for the 2022-23 school year, with the exception of Results 4: Personal Development, Section 4.5. Trustee Close, will you please open debate?
I will be brief, because I believe that we've been provided with the important information of why we're revising the indicators, not only from a workload perspective, but definitely that is hugely important and I think necessary to do, but also because I believe that we'll be provided the results that we need in order to monitor progress on these policies going forward, and hope that trustees will support this recommendation for our revised indicators. Thank you.
Trustee is wishing to enter first round of debate? Go ahead, trustee Downey.
I would echo trustee Close's comments in that I feel we also will have the results that we need to monitor effectively in our role as trustees, and also wanted to acknowledge the desire of the trustees and administration to reduce the workload for teachers, which is very, very important. So very pleased to see that proposal come forward and to hopefully help teachers adjust to some of the changes coming next year. So thanks very much.
Trustee Bukadinevich?
I am inclined to vote in favor of this motion, although I wish it had gone further because our results that we expect for students around citizenship, personal development, and character are incredibly important, but I feel like the pendulum has swung a bit too far in terms of the tyranny of indicators and the chokehold of indicators to demonstrate that our students are achieving these important results.
Trustee Dennis?
Thank you very much. I'm happy to support this motion based on all of the information in the report. It makes perfect sense to do this right now, especially with a new curriculum coming to schools to us in the fall, and clearly that needs to be the focus, and being able to support a successful implementation while also trying to take bits of workload off of our educators, and again, also feel sufficiently confident that we'll get information that we need in order to monitor reasonable progress for our students.
Trustees for first round? Trustees wishing to enter or re-enter for second round of debate? Trustee Close, do you wish to close debate?
Just to echo comments that other trustees have made and to add that I think we have an opportunity in the future to be provided input on the measures and outcomes that we choose to use for monitoring our policy. And then as a board, that's obviously our work going forward, is recognizing what information we need and at what time in order to review progress. So I encourage our trustees to support this recommendation. Thank you.
I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Any... Are there any additional motions on this report? Trustee Close?
The follow-up motion is that the Board of Trustees approves the revised Indicator 4.5.1 for Results 4: Personal Development Policy as provided in Attachment 1 to this report.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the revised Indicator 4.5.1 for Results 4: Personal Development Policy as provided in Attachment 1 to this report. Trustee Close, will you please open debate?
Just briefly, I think it's been shared that because there's no separate course on health for K to 6, that we're revising the indicators to monitor progress on this policy.
Trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Trustees for second round of debate? Trustee Close, do you wish to close debate?
Close, thank you.
Call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. We are going to take a quick recess. We'll return at 12:45.
The leases at two of these sites, namely the Bowness site and the Westbrook site, both expire at the end of the 22, 23 school years, so next school year. Additionally, recent changes made by Alberta Education offers an opportunity to offer a broader spectrum of support to students that access the outreach program offered by the CBE across these four sites. The Education Act and Board of Trustees Policy GC3E, the Closure of Schools Procedure, set out the formal process that must be followed when closure, even if only for the purpose of relocation, is being considered. As a result, and further to the direction provided by the Board of Trustees on April 26 to initiate that public input process, the CBE subsequently provided written notice to stakeholders of the proposed relocations, posted notices of the public meetings, held two public meetings, the first on May 26 with a Bowness focus, the second on May 30 with a Westbrook focus, and provided opportunities for the public to provide verbal and written comment. Accordingly, today, we can confirm that a result of this work, we have complied with the requirements of the Education Act and of the board policy pertaining to school closures. With this work now complete and the information now available to the Board of Trustees regarding the recommendations before you, we are available to answer any additional questions you might have at this time.
Trustees with questions or comments on the report? Trustee Downey?
In relation to course program access and availability, how are CTS courses currently accessed by Discovering Choices students at both the Bowness and Westbrook locations? And also, do Discovering Choices students currently have access to work experience and registered apprenticeship programs?
Through the chair, I'll address your last question first. So yes, all students at all Discovering Choices sites have access to work experience and RAP, as well as dual credit programming on top of that. With respect to CTS programs that students currently have access to, those are identified as Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3, Tier 3 being the ones that require the significant focus shops or specific spaces. Tier 1 and Tier 2 access is available at the Bowness location with courses such as Aboriginal Studies, Art, various career and technology studies such as project management and visual composition. At the Westbrook location, students have access to some similar offerings, but these may, as they do in other schools as well, vary based on teaching background of the staff as well as capacity and experience. At Robert Thirsk School, Outreach students would have an opportunity to access CTS offerings which include leadership, legal studies, business, photography, video production, sports medicine, construction, and culinary arts. At Alternative High School, Outreach students continue to have access to other CTS programming specific to the CT Center, as well as other courses that they would access, such as art within the setting of Alternative High School as well.
Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. So just to start on some questions, I guess, around the flexibility in timetabling. So can you please provide a bit of information on how many nights a week are each of these current locations open for students to come in?
So through the chair. So students that are registered at any of the Discovering Choices sites can attend what are called late-night blocks of support. And Discovering Choices opens opportunity up at the Downtown and North Gate locations as these locations had the most student participation in late night prior to COVID. And so when these are being offered to students, any of the students across all four of our programs have an opportunity to participate in these late-night offerings. Currently, the Downtown location is open on Wednesdays until 5:00 p.m., and the North Gate location is open on Tuesdays until 5:00 p.m. And so since the staffing allocations would remain at these Discovering Choices sites, similar offerings for late-night blocks will continue.
Trustee May?
So it's mentioned that the government requirement to house these programs outside of school buildings was eliminated in 2021, 2022. Looking at the Alberta website, they still state outreach programs should operate as a standalone facility and be removed from a traditional school setting. It also indicates government is revising Outreach Programs Handbook and will post updated handbook online when available. So does the CBE have access to the new outreach guidelines? And in moving the programs, do we still meet the requirements?
So through the chair, we have specifically inquired, and the new Outreach Program Handbook has not been finalized or publicly shared, so we do not have access, nor does any other school authority at this time. Where we can receive our information, where it would allow us to house these within current high school locations, is now within the funding manual. And so that has occurred within the last two years of that change being allowable.
Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you. So just to follow up to my previous question about the sites being available for evening classes, just wondering about what may be an impact on that availability of evening access with the proposed new locations?
So through the chair, so as I shared before, the two locations right now that have that late-night access are the Downtown and the North Gate locations. So with the proposed relocations, those would still remain. And so that means that all the students at all of the Discovering Choices sites, wherever they're located, would still have access to those locations.
Trustee Downey, go ahead.
Superintendent Breton and trustee May have pointed to changes in provincial requirements to house outreach programs. So I'm wondering if this change reflects best practice for students who are at risk for not graduating? And is there any research to point to the need for programming that does not occur in a traditional high school setting?
So through the chair. So research and best practice, as I'm sure would not be surprising to anyone, would be that it's really about the people that surround the student and the supports that are provided. And so within these programs, regardless of location, we would ensure that we still have those supports at the ready for each of those students. And so those allocations would remain, the supports would remain, the one-on-one personalized learning and connections for those students would remain. What would be provided, which would provide opportunity that might be able to allow more students to find success through the optional courses and the other pieces that are offered to students that would be more amenable to that opportunity? So again, looking at that personalized site selection for each of the students who would be designated as students having those at-risk factors that would be served well in an outreach location, we would make sure that the transitions of placement would be dependent on what opportunities along that continuum of supports and programming would be best fit for those students. So to bring it back to the research part, we certainly would still have discrete locations for those students who require that because of whatever needs they may have. But we then would also make sure that we have other opportunities that provide greater opportunities for engagement in other programming. And in all of those, we would have those essential natural supports and adults that are trusting and care about those students that are in all of the locations.
Trustee Dennis?
All right, thank you very much. So again, just around flexibility of timetabling and access to programming. So will Discovering Choices students be restricted to accessing CTS spaces such as and science labs and other spaces like that to regular daytime hours only? Should these programs move to these other locations? Or do you see a scenario evolving that would see these students being able to access this broader range of opportunities within their more flexible schedule needs?
I think that is an opportunity, sorry, through the chair, that could be an opportunity that could be reviewed depending on the students' needs and the staffing contingents that's available at each site. What we do know is right now, the late-night opportunities are there more for students to have that one-on-one personalized learning support, that that is something that works for their personalized schedule. What happens during that time period is really specific and individualized for that student, but it could include some of the things that you were mentioning.
Trustee May, go ahead.
Kind of branching out what trustee Dennis was saying. So it says that Discovering Choices would continue to teach core subjects to Discovering Choices students only. So I'm wondering, what about the students who require a mixture? How will the staff and how will they manage that? Like, how will the regular staff manage it? And will it create a barrier to the students who do require the flexibility?
Through the chair, I think one of the most important things to reiterate is that there is not an intention to change the staffing allocation that accompanies each of these programs. As such, students currently in Discovering Choices receive supports both through their Core as well as through others. What we're looking to do, again, when we look at Discovering Choices as a whole, all four sites included, this allows for that continuum of supports which would allow students to receive those very direct sheltered programming and also be able to then look to access other types of courses. Some courses may continue to be taught that are not Core, may continue to be taught and supported by their existing staff as they do now. Others may then be, again, through that personalized programming, would then be looked to be scheduled based on what's available within each of those other school sites, whether that be Robert Thirsk or Alternative High in the structure that's existing there. And so that transition plan, personalized approach, would really be the opportunity or the lever by which decisions would be made around where which courses were selected. It's also important to note that students enter into Discovering Choices through different grade levels. So it's not, in fact, the vast majority of students enter in either between grade 11 or actually at the start of grade 12, specific to these two sites. And within that, that importance of identifying what will best support that student in achieving graduation is part of that planning and course selection. So to assume that the intent is to place this program at a regular high school site and then expect that anything outside of Core is now taught by somebody else is not the intent. So I just want to make sure that that's stated really clearly. It is an opportunity, and it is now, it would then be an option, but it is not the intent.
Trustee Dennis?
Thank you very much. So I have a couple of questions regarding the process of having to complete annual grant applications to increase opportunities for Discovering Choices students. So we received a comment just regarding a level of frustration of having to do these annual grant applications. So a couple of things. Can you, I guess, provide some context about what that So a couple of things, can you, I guess, provide some context about what that process looks like? And also, is it different than a process used by any one of our schools? We have a follow-up after that.
Sure. So through the chair, I think it's really important just to acknowledge that all of the staffing and the supports are provided within the CBE budget. And so those components are not something we're seeking grants for. Those are pieces that we have designated as part of the allocation that we know is really important to the success of those students. What the grants are usually for would be actually the same grants that are accessed by other schools. So this would be granting that could come from education matters or all for youth through United Way. So those grant application processes and practices would be the same that all other schools would be facing.
Trustee Dennis, go ahead with your follow-up.
All right, thank you for the clarity around, I guess, the granting process. That was really helpful. But in terms, I guess, of some requests that are being asked for, do we have an idea? Or can you give us an idea of what types of requests are being made? And so what they're looking for in terms of additional programming for their students? And, you know, what impact, if any, would relocation have on being able to, I'll use the word grant, those requests or even be able to meet those, meet those asks?
Through the chair, so again, this probably wouldn't be any different than what other schools with students that have higher risk factors would be asking for. So it could be a range of additional technology, resources, food, resources for, for students. All of those pieces are really essential for any student within the CB that has those presentations and factors and needs. So that wouldn't change. What I would say would continue and continues to be really important are the, the care and the personalized knowledge of those staff, that those, of the students, the Discovering Choices staff have for each and every student. That will remain because again, we're not looking to many, to make any alterations to the staffing allocations. Our intention is for the staff to move with the students over to the new locations. So all of that knowledge about those individualized students and their needs and seeking out grants or other opportunities for them would be upon the onus of the staff that continue with them. So, you know, again, just to summarize, kind of on the same spectrum of all the students and all of the staff that do this good work for many students within the CB who present these needs and challenges, and they would be making sure that they're able to find those additional opportunities for students.
Trustee Downey, go ahead.
I'm wondering how long this CBE has been offering Discovering Choices at alternative locations? And how many students who attend Discovering Choices at some point in their high school career graduate with a diploma or certificate? And also wondering how many students that do not graduate are transitioned successfully to work?
Thanks, through the chair. So I'll try and tackle these one at a time here. So the first one is sort of a bit of CBE history. So Discovering Choices started in an outreach location in the Alberta Trade Center 20 years ago. So that's Discovering Choices Downtown. So started its current location in 1992. Discovering Choices to North Gate started in 1999 and it opened actually in the Boys and Girls Club in Marlboro Mall and was moved very successfully into its current location just this year. Discovering Choices Bonnais started in 2001 and it started in a storefront location on Bonnais Road and moved to its current location in 2007. And then Discovering Choices Westbrook started in 2003 and has remained in that same location at Westbrook Mall. And second, the next question, which was on the graduates. So what I can do is share with you that, as Superintendent Pittman already had shared, that approximately half or a little bit more than half of our students at those two sites actually come at the beginning of or during their grade 12 year. And so they have been in other schools and come over. But within that, we are able to track the students that graduate out of Discovering Choices, but we don't know of the ones that we're unable to track very easily, the ones that have moved back into regular high school. But we'd say most of those that come in do remain. So with that, we have this year, we're projecting for a total of 212 graduates. Of course, the school year has not ended yet, but we are expecting and hoping for all of those graduates to complete their high school graduation requirements. And so specifically for the Westbrook location, that's 47 graduates, and the Start Bonnais location, that's 29 graduates. And the 212 is approximately the same, has been quite steady for the last few years about the amount of graduates coming out of Discovering Choices across all four of the sites. And then the final question, which is on how many of our students that do not graduate are successfully transitioned to work? And so we don't have the exact numbers because as soon as they leave CBE, unfortunately, we are unable to track them. But what I can tell you is part of the work that happens at Discovering Choices is, again, with that individualized knowledge, the students are able to access things like work experience, the dual credit opportunities, get into the trades, they'd be connected into post-secondary for those that would see that as a suitable next step. So again, that access and opportunity would be there for every one of those students. So the hope would be that they all find success after leaving Discovering Choices, whether or not they graduate from high school. And certainly any of the time that they have there is infused with all of those opportunities and next steps.
Trustee Bukidinovich.
Which locations had been researched before you came to the decision to recommend these two locations?
Through the chair, the locations that were considered for the Northwest quadrant was right away Robert Thirst, given where we saw projections for the enrollment and the capacity of that school at being a location that would allow for, for that. And then for the Westbrook location, initially, there was consideration given to Lord Beaverbrook and Henry Wisewood, but ultimately, we landed at Alternative High School as, as the preferred location.
Trustee Bukidinovich with the follow-up.
So if I understand correctly, no commercial locations were considered? And if that is correct, could I get some more information about why that is?
Through the chair. So as indicated during the initial introduction that I provided, the idea here is to be able to provide a greater spectrum of options to students. And so we were motivated by that. And the fact that we have seen the funding formula change for the support by the provincial government towards outreach programs, whereas in the past, there was an amount per site, now it is a fixed amount of $150,000. It's provided irrespective of how many sites a school jurisdiction has. And so we're trying to, again, continue to offer those supports for students that need a private site, if you want, a site like the Downtown site, like the North Gate site, but then also offer that greater spectrum in terms of access to other programming that could be made available in other locations while also supporting those students where those students, of course, feel that that would be appropriate for them versus a, a private location.
Trustee May, go ahead.
So it's been mentioned a couple of times that there's no intention to change staffing allocations, but in the report, under implementation consequences, it says the first year of implementation not anticipated any changes to staff. Adjustments are made in an ongoing basis according with goals and priorities identified in school development plans and RAMs. So my question is, what does this mean in the second year of implementation? Will RAM be allocated for the school as a whole or with consideration that there's a housed program within the school?
So through the chair, there would be an expectation it would continue to be its own school site and have its own RAM allocations. And so in the report, in looking at the transition for the first year, just articulating that it would be the lift and shift of allocations into the new site, but that would be expected to continue. Of course, what we would want to be seeing within that is what is the actual allocations required? So if, for example, our student numbers went up because of the locations or there was more need in the city for students to be accessing outreach programming and those went up in their allocation, then there would be further allocation provided to them. Same would be if, if the allocations went down or if students were accessing different supports within the school building that caused us to create that shift. However, right now, as it stands, we are expecting that those allocations that are given and the RAM associated with them remains as a separate school within the larger school building. So the intent is to continue to track that over time.
Trustee Dennis.
Thank you. Actually, I have a follow-up to Trustee May's question. I'll get back to my other question. But so based on that, I guess, would there be any shared costs? Because I guess, you know, certainly we're talking about Discovering Choices and, you know, what impacts of moving might be there. But, you know, as governors, when we consider the entire system and what that means, you know, there is an impact also on, on these host schools, I guess, or host buildings, I'll call them. And so would there be any shared cost and would there be any impact to operations and maintenance budgets for the host schools should the programs move over? Because as it is right now, Discovering Choices sites don't attract any operations and maintenance dollars, is that correct?
Through the chair, so that is correct. The sites attract that outreach grant that is a fixed amount of 150,000. They do not attract operation and maintenance funding. What the potential relocation of those sites into operating high schools could do, in this case, we have a Alternative High School that is in the 70% utilization rate. It would move it into that, that higher range. Having said that, the projections were that we were going to get there notwithstanding. And so within the report, we don't talk to that as being a potential outcome because we were anticipating receiving full O and M for the Alternative High School. Robert Thirst High School was borderline within the ideal zone and it will ensure, again, that it stays within that, that ideal operating zone from a utilization rate perspective, attracting full operation and maintenance grant.
If I could just add, sort of from the educator lens, so what also would be considered sort of a shared opportunity at these schools within the larger high school sites is that now you have, so there's sort of a mutually beneficial arrangement. So you have now within a larger high school, a group of staff who are extremely knowledgeable about trauma-informed practice and supporting students who present at-risk factors. That is an expertise that could be spread through professional learning without, throughout the whole building. Conversely, there's also benefit to the rest of the building being able to add benefit to those students in the school. So not only because they might engage with the opportunities that are outside of the sheltered classrooms, if it's available to them, based on their needs such as courses or extracurricular opportunities, there's also a wider spectrum of supports that are in a high school setting that they might be able to take advantage of. This could include that they, again, at their readiness, this could include if they wanted to engage with an Indigenous support worker that is present in the school at that time. They might be more present there because there's a larger amount of students and it's a larger high school setting. So there are some, there's some mutually beneficial factors that could present some efficiencies and opportunities.
Trustee Bukidinovich.
During the public engagement, we heard that some DC students experienced significant stress and anxiety when entering typical high school settings where they may have had negative experiences in the past. Will there be separate entrances and exits as well as flexible start and end times for Discovering Choices students? And can you speak to how this will look at the proposed sites of Robert Thirst and Alternative High School?
Through the chair, I'll start with the, the first part and just indicate that, yes, on both, in both locations, they will be able to have a dedicated and separate entrance. And beyond that, of course, the, you know, other services, whether it's the washroom or if they're accessing other programming opportunities within that building, at that point in time, those would be common areas. As far as the, the sites themselves, they'd be offering very similar opportunities from a classroom perspective, so it's between two to four classrooms. Robert Thirst has the, the benefit of also having some breakout rooms. Having said that, it's my understanding that in most instances, students utilize a common area but are secluded because there's typically not more than two or three within a classroom at a time. And so they're, they're separated out within the classroom with their staff supporting them during that time.
And I would just add, and with respect to the flexible entry and exit times, that would absolutely continue. That's essential to the success of the students. Most of them do not follow the regular bell schedule, nor would they be expected to. Usually, peak attendance for these sites is around lunchtime. And again, we've heard from, talking about the late nights, that some have shifts later in the day and some come in earlier. So it'd be expected that their, their attendance in and out of the building would be still quite fluid.
Trustee Dennis.
Thank you so much. So Superintendent Breton, you in, I guess, alluded to the, sort of a next piece I'm wondering about a little bit is, you know, roughly, how many students are in the location at the same time? And I think what you alluded to there is that, you know, smaller numbers, which I'm understanding to be factual. But we do have, like, students have stated that they value having, you know, quiet spaces for smaller groups or individual students to be able to, you know, be served. And so just wondering, you know, do our current locations have, you know, that capacity? Or how is that accommodated in our current locations? But then, you know, and how can that be replicated or possibly even enhanced with, with these proposed relocations?
So through the chair, yes, so the, so these would be opportunities that could be maintained and enhanced. So that was a really important consideration when we were looking at proposed locations for these sites. It is important for students to be able to have that one-to-one access for students or with staff. And a lot of that happens surrounding the counseling and psychology portion of the supports they receive. So that absolutely has been built into the plan. And I believe as Superintendent Breton spoke to in his previous answer and just in addressing those flexible start and end times, it is pretty simple, pretty easy when you go into one of the sites to have, you know, spreading out so that students can be working in smaller settings with their individual teachers, even in a larger space for their learning, that combined with those smaller breakout rooms or office spaces will be intact.
Trustee May, go ahead.
I'm still a little confused with Trustee Dennis' question because in the plan, it says they'll have two to four classrooms. But how are we maintaining it and accessing it in two to four classrooms when these high schools have quite high utilization? Like where does the space come from to make it?
Through the chair. And so the space, those high schools, I would say, in general, have a tremendous amount of flexibility because of how typically you don't have all students in a school at any one time. There are a lot of different opportunities for them to be moving to different areas of the school or potentially in other locations entirely. And so we have operated high schools with utilization rates well above 100%. And we've been able to do that because of that flexibility that's, that exists within the high schools. And so in this case, we have two high schools where their utilization rates previously, you know, I guess I'm meaning before the proposed change, if that change were to, to come about, allowed for a tremendous amount of flexibility because they were a far degree away from that 100% utilization. Now certainly, these proposals will bring them into that, into that zone. And so most certainly, it will require a little bit more planning on behalf of the administrator, but we have a high degree of confidence that we can carve out those spaces, be able to offer that programming to those students and still be able to operate within the remainder of the school without any adverse impact on that school's ability to deliver for those students. to deliver for those students.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions, I guess, on intake and enrollment. So would there be any change to the intake process and how students are placed into Discovering Choices as a result of a relocation?
So through the chair, there would not be. So right now, the way that a student is taken into an outreach program is through conversation between, first of all, the principal that is suggesting this and the principal that is receiving, the principal of the outreach programs. And then it further goes down to the level of conversation with the student and their parent. And within that conversation, there is discussion as to which location best meets their needs. And so that would not change. What we would continue to be able to provide to them is a summary of where the locations are, help them with figuring out the transportation and access. But in this case, we'd also be able to offer them what that continuum looks like. And obviously, by, through the conversation we have with the people that know them at their current school site, as well as incorporating the voice of the student and the parent, then presenting them with what choices we feel would be best for them. And ultimately, it is the parent and student's choice as to which school site they attend. Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I mean, Discovering Choices offers an impressive suite of supports to students, right? And we are seeing a level of success in terms of graduating students out of the program. Based quickly on the numbers there, we're looking at, you know, 212 out of about 1,000 students or so, you know, 20% graduation rate. And, you know, I think with the complexities that those students bring, every success for them should be celebrated. I'm wondering about if, by moving to these proposed locations, would it give us the ability to welcome more students into those locations, first of all? And would it also help in terms of awareness, right, that this program exists? Because I have to think that there are more students in our system that would benefit from the supports that are provided through Discovering Choices. So I wonder if this move might help with that, too, just to build some awareness around the program.
So through the chair, I believe that part of what works in favor of not having to worry about capacity as much for these programs as compared to if we're looking at, say, an elementary school, is their flexible scheduling. So again, what we have on paper of the amount of students attending was very different than if you were to walk into the school at any one time and see which students were there. So that place would be not a concern for moving the program. And in fact, I think with what Superintendent Breton proposed with the flexibility that's afforded in a larger high school, in fact, I think we would have perhaps even the opportunity to grow it even more, should it need to be, because we'd have access to an entire school rather than a smaller space. And, you know, obviously, notwithstanding the fact that there are many students within the school, we are still able to carve out amongst a larger building some spaces for those students that is still sheltered and provides those opportunities. It also allows for some of those students, if they're ready, to be in other classrooms, if that is something that they desire and would be appropriate for them. As far as, you know, leveraging the exposure of students that might be successful in outreach, that is a possibility, certainly at those two schools, that there are now students who weren't aware of this or weren't seeing that as a viable site for them. They might be then, obviously, highly convenience by having it within their locations. So that is a possibility that, you know, we haven't explored it sort of in a research-centered way, but it certainly could be something that could arise. Tessie May?
So I've heard lots about opportunity and possible growth, but what about long-term forecasting? So if the program does decrease in enrollment, is there a minimum enrollment requirement to continue to operate if we do move it to a new high school setting?
So through the chair, there isn't a minimum requirement. I think there is, it becomes, you know, if it were to dwindle into really low numbers, I guess we would have to consider the viability of the program as it would with any. However, situating it within a larger high school, just like the other question about growth allows for it to be able to decrease in size as well fairly easily, what generally tends to right size in programs like this would be the staffing contingent. So if the amount of students were to decrease, we would obviously not need as many staff to support those students, just like if it were to increase, we would increase the amount of staff.
And sorry, if I could just add onto that, the other element is to, again, when we look at discrete sites, the equal level of risk exists in discrete sites where, for whatever reason, enrollment to decline, there's in fact less ability to mitigate the impacts of that in discrete sites than there would be if we were needing to, looking at this in the context of a continuum, that would allow for maintaining programming. So we're really looking to create sustainability through this approach in being able to mitigate other changes, recognizing that Discovering Choices is part of high school experiences that exist for, across all of our city in different ways, and that it's not separate and distinct from larger high schools in the context of programming. It's part of the nature of what we offer. And so in this particular, with respect to your question, I think it's important to acknowledge that that risk can exist regardless of location. It's not due to location. And in fact, in this context, there may be a greater ability to create sustainability in that particular line of questioning.
Trustee Domi?
I'm wondering if the proposed changes are accepted if the Westbrook School and the Bowness School would retain their Alberta Education School codes?
So through the chair, yes, that would be the intention. So it is still going to be considered as a discrete school and therefore would maintain its school code. And with that, all of the other pieces, such as a discrete RAM allocation and so on. Trustee May, go ahead.
So this is kind of, I guess, more of a process question. We talk about sustainability, if it can be better managed within a school. But to confirm, if we, if this does go forward and it moves to a, like, a high school setting, administration could at any time decide to cancel, move the program without trustee approval, since the building itself will still continue to be used for educational programming, correct?
Through the chair, no, because of how we just mentioned a few moments ago that these schools will retain their school code. So there'll be schools within a school. And if we look at your policy on school closures, it specifies that the closure process is required for the closure of a school or a school building. And so in this case, these schools within an operating school would continue to be, if you want, protected by that and would require your attention and decision, should the decision be required. And, you know, we were just talking about enrollment, and sure enough, you know, for the Westbrook and Bowness sites, as per the material that was presented to the board, we have seen a continuing declination of enrollment at those sites. And so should, again, these sites remain where they currently are, we may come to a point, at some point in the future, where that kind of discussion might be required, even if they were to remain within their leased sites.
I've got a little bit of follow-up on that, just in relation to enrollment. Has there been ways that CBE has tried to bolster enrollment within those programs? Like, I know that the intent would be, if they're in a school, that would bring awareness. Have there been ways that we've tried to bolster in the past?
So through the chair, we certainly would prefer and encourage success for our students within their regular high school site to the greatest extent possible. And so we are really grateful for students who do require outreach programming, that are successful at the outreach programming sites, and the wonderful staff who are there to support them. However, it's not something we would want to encourage. What we want to make sure of is that, and we do make sure of, is all of our high school principals and administrators are aware of these programs. So if they are seeing a student who demonstrates at-risk factors, we would then want to ensure that this is brought forward as a potential possibility. So if the best were to happen, all of our students would be successful in their home high school site and would not need an outreach site. But because we know that there are other factors that are presented that can exist outside of schools, we know that these are good places for a few of our students.
I only have three questions to ask. I've been really appreciating all the questions and the answers, and two are out of curiosity, and I'm going to lump those together. Does the CBE track dropout rates by geographic location? And do our K-12 school development plans own, in the sense of analyze their high school graduation rates and dropout rates in their own geographic location?
Through the chair, so each education director or the two education directors in each area would be tracking the high school completion and dropout rates. In addition to that, if I extend then to schools and school development plans, one of the things you've noted in your results reporting is that high school completion and dropout rates are a leg point of data related to Alberta education and limit the analysis of the cohort to only those students who entered in grade 10. So with the school development plans and for each high school, the analysis of both course completion and rate of course completion, as well as progress to track towards high school completion, along with final completion, are all elements that are expectations regarding analysis within each high school setting and specific to the students and programs that they offer.
Trustee Close, go ahead.
The only other question I have is more general in nature but broad. What are the consequences, impacts, if we do not close and relocate Bowness and Westbrook Discovering Choices sites? And I think I'm also asking from a next step process, whether we have to go through a school closure process again if this fails? Just curious about impact for student learning, but also process.
So through the chair, I'll start with the student learning impact, and Superintendent Breton, I'm sure, will continue. So I think the impact that would, there would be if we did not go through the closure and relocation process, that was not upheld by the board today. What we would see is the continuation of what there currently is as far as student learning in these discrete sites, which means there's excellent supports for students that are surrounded by staff who care about them and know them as students and learners and people. That would continue. What would not be possible would be to provide learning opportunities for students that could be possible within a continuum. So if we are looking at what could happen if we did move forward with this relocation, having students that are, would benefit from an outreach setting, but would still benefit from engagement in higher-level CTS courses, in being able to do more hands-on culinary arts or art courses or optional courses in the regular high school setting, all the way to those students who still need those discrete sites, we would have that continuum of supports. So if we didn't move forward, the impact would be, we would just be where we are now, and we wouldn't have that opportunity for the students. And again, really recognizing that we would still have excellent outreach programming for students, but it wouldn't be along that continuum and the higher-level vision that we have for these students and what they could achieve. And with that, I think I'll pass it over to Superintendent Breton, who can talk more about the building and process.
From a facility impact, of course, we have a program here that in the leasing costs and the operating costs come to, you know, almost $700,000 total. And of course, we're receiving a grant of $150,000 to operate that. And so, of course, continuing in these locations could be in one of two things. One, we continue for those two sites, it's close to $400,000 for operations and for the lease costs. So we would be continuing to have to commit those funds and essentially be drawing them from the global budget, meaning that then those monies are not available to invest in other student priorities elsewhere within the system. That is one possibility. The other possibility actually reflects back on what happened in 2019. In 2019, there was an initial discussion around these sites, because the owner of the building, and that is still the current owner, of the Bowness site specifically, advised the CBE that they were selling the building and that they would not renew the lease for that site. Now, for your awareness, the owner of that building is currently still in discussions that ultimately did not pan out, and we were able to get an extension up to 2023. At this moment in time, the owner of that site is again in discussions in regards to a sale of that building. And so as a tenant, you're talking about next steps, we could very well be coming back to the Board of Trustees in the very near future to indicate the fact that we need to relocate this site and we have no choice. And at this point in time, of course, again, it would trigger the closure policy that you have, and we would be going through this process again. And it would be the same thing, again, if we were to stay in those existing locations, and if we were allowed to stay in those existing locations, if other factors ultimately brought us to the point where we felt that was necessary. But then again, as per your closure procedure, we cannot bring such a motion forward to you, for your consideration, before at least 12 months. And so typically, that actually plays itself out to be more a 12-month period, because obviously, we wouldn't be bringing something to you at this time next year to initiate something over the summer months. It would be, it would not be acceptable to the students and families we support.
Just to follow up to what Superintendent Breton just said, through the chair, would we be allowed to, as a Board of Trustees, if circumstances warranted, to change that policy or allow for, to allow administration, if needed, to bring forward a closure motion again within the 12-month period? Because I understand why that would be a policy in, when it comes to traditional school closures, say, of an elementary school. But in this particular case, would we be allowed, as a Board of Trustees, if we so chose to amend that?
Ms. Mayner?
So the board is always, my apologies, through the chair, the board is always at their purview to change their policies. So it would require a report to come to this, a public meeting where you would vote to change that. The alternative is, if you didn't want to make it as a permanent change to the policy, that we could have, again, a motion that would come to a public meeting to allow that 60 or 12-month requirement to be waived in relation to a particular circumstance on closure.
Thank you very much. So in, with all of the work that administration has done to be able to consider all of the factors that are necessary to consider when we're looking at these closures for purpose of relocation, just would like to give you the opportunity, I guess, to say now, is there anything about the proposed locations, in your view, that would hinder any of the students' ability to be able to access the programming that they need to graduate high school? And also the supports that they need in order to be successful? So is there anything about those proposed locations that you have identified that would put a roadblock in front of any of these students that we're serving? put a roadblock in front of any of these students that, that we're serving?
Through the chair, if I may, and then I, then I will, certainly my colleague will, will add as appropriate. Through the chair, our commitment always is to ensure that students have the right supports to be successful. And that commitment is even more so when we're dealing with students who have identified some at-risk factors. And I think it's, having visited those sites and see the way the adults in that building provide support, I have every confidence that that will continue in spite of this, this, this direction. And I believe that those conditions will be present in our schools. And so I just wanted to, to convey that commitment that we will always, that will always be a key consideration as we move forward. But I certainly, I'll pass it over.
Thank you, Chief Usee. And through the chair, I think, you know, if we, if we were, if we didn't have students that had barriers, we would have 100% graduation rates, and we are not there now. And it would be wonderful if we could be there. We are not there now. So we know that regardless of what we offer, there are some students who would find that there are challenges to engaging in a school setting successfully regardless. As Chief Usee has said, we believe that this new proposal provides different opportunities that would allow more students to find success, and in new and different ways. It is a hybrid model that allows for students to still have access to the discreet sites should they need it because of their at-risk factors, and allowing for more opportunity for those students. So the, the hope and the intent and our goal is to provide greater success and not less.
Are there any more questions on the report? Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report? Trustee Dennis?
Yes, thank you. That pursuant to Section N10J of the Board Meeting Procedures, the Board of Trustees authorized that no trustee shall speak more than twice for five minutes on each of the motions contained in the consideration of closure for the purpose of relocation of Discovering Choices Start Outreach Bonnais and Discovering Choices Westbrook Outreach Board Report.
Do trustees have any questions on the motion? The motion on the floor is that pursuant to Section N10J, the Board Meeting Procedures, the Board of Trustees authorized that no trustee shall speak more than twice for five minutes on each of the motions contained in the consideration of closure for the purpose of relocation of Discovering Choices Start Outreach Bonnais and Discovering Choices Westbrook Outreach Board Report. Trustee Dennis, will you please open debate?
Sure, thank you. So for almost all decisions of the Board of Trustees, three minutes of debate each round of debate is quite sufficient. But because of the multiple factors that must be considered by the Board of Trustees in order to, I guess, fully deliberate on the multiple factors that are part of this decision, I would like to see the board supported by having just a little extra time in debate. So, which is why I've asked for five minutes for each of the two rounds.
Trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Second round of debate? Trustee Close?
Thank you for bringing this forward. And, and although I would always prefer three rounds, because that's more debate than, than, well, it just makes more sense to me. And I just want to share the irony of, of the ability of this process to inform us when we're sitting here on the floor. So I appreciate more time to provide the debate that we're going to have on both of these motions. Thank you for bringing that forward, trustee Dennis.
I will just add, the reason there's not three rounds is because we follow Robert's rules, and so the more time allows us to follow those rules. Anyone wishing to enter second round debate? Trustee Dennis, will you please close?
Nothing further to add, thank you.
I'll call the question, those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. The board will now consider the approval of the minutes for the May 20...
Sorry, Chair Hock. I was wondering if, at some point before we enter into debate on the two closure motions specifically, if the board could please have a short recess, just to give us time to consider the additional information that administration provided to us today as we, as we finish up our debate.
For clarification, do you want that now?
Just sometime before we enter debate on the motions themselves. The, the closure motion specifically, not saying for the minutes and all of that, but just the actual motions for closure for the purpose of relocation, please.
Absolutely. We'll call that before then. The board will now consider the approval of the minutes for the May 26th and May 30th, 2022, public meetings. I would request a trustee bring forward a motion regarding the approval of these minutes. Trustee Downey, go ahead.
The motion is that the minutes of the public input meeting for Discovering Choices Westbrook Outreach on May 30th, 2022, attachment one to this report are approved by the Board of Trustees. And Chair, should I include the other date as well? Okay. That the minutes of the public input meeting for Discovering Choices Bonnais Outreach on May 30th, 2022, attachment to this report are approved by the Board of Trustees.
Can I get clarifications on... Do trustees have any questions about the motion? I do have a question. Can you clarify the dates for each input meeting?
Yeah. Pardon me, I haven't them separated, I think. I just need a minute here. Thank you for your understanding. I'll just try that motion again. That the minutes of the public input meeting for Discovering Choices Start Outreach Bonnais on May 26th, 2022, attachment one to this report are approved by the Board of Trustees, and that the minutes of the public meeting, public input meeting for Discovering Choices Westbrook Outreach on May 30th, 2022, attachment one to this report are approved by the Board of Trustees.
Do trustees have any questions about this motion? Okay. The motion on the floor is that the minutes of the public input meeting for Discovering Choices Start Outreach Bonnais on May 26th, 2022, attachment one to this report are approved by the Board of Trustees, and that the minutes of the public input meeting for Discovering Choices Westbrook Outreach on May 30th, 2022, attachment one to this report are approved by the Board of Trustees. Trustee Downey, will you please open debate?
Yeah, I believe that the motion speaks for itself.
Trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Trustees wishing to enter second round of debate? Trustee Downey, do you wish to close?
Nothing further to add.
Call the question, those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. As per requested, we'll take a short recess, we'll come back at 2 o'clock.
I will call the meeting back to order. Trustee Downey, would you please provide the board with a synopsis of the public submissions received by trustees in relation to the consideration of closure of Start Outreach and Westbrook Outreach for the purpose of relocation?
There were twelve written communications addressed specifically to trustees regarding the proposal for closure for the purpose of relocation of Discovering Choices Start Outreach Bonus and Westbrook Outreach locations. I have analyzed the responses, highlighting recurring themes and key words, and assessed their frequency, as well as noting who they were written by using general identifiers. Communications were provided by community partners, current and former Discovering Choices staff, City of Calgary staff, current and former students of Discovering Choices, and one parent. The majority of the communications were in relation to the bonus location, with two in relation to just the Westbrook location, and three that spoke to both locations. One written communication supported the administrative proposal of closure for the purpose of relocation citing leveraging of facilities to provide specialized programming. Eleven of the written communications opposed the closure for relocation purposes. The themes that emerged in the order of most to least frequency were: the positive nature of the current locations related to being a separate entity, the small number of students, flexibility of programming, physical movement to and from the school, and the feeling of safety. The second theme that emerged with the most frequency was that students had been previously unsuccessful in a traditional high school setting. The third theme related to the integration of the current locations into their communities regarding volunteerism and existing community supports and partnerships. The last three themes that emerged related to student-peer relations and decreased behavior issues and peer conflict resulting from a separate school entity, and the concern of probable anxiety and attendance problems that may occur with the relocation of the schools into traditional high school settings.
Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report? Trustee Bukidinovich?
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the closure of the Discovering Choices Start Outreach Bonus Program effective June 30, 2023 for the purpose of relocation.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the closure of the Discovering Choices Start Outreach Bonus Program effective June 30, 2023 for the purpose of relocation. Trustee Bukidinovich, would you please open debate?
Thank you Chair Hack. Although I am the mover of this motion, I need to hear from my colleagues. I myself am interested to hear the debate of my colleagues. I am comfortable moving this motion so we can have that debate.
Trustees wishing to enter first round? Trustee Downey, go ahead.
When administration brings forward a proposal to close a school or to close a school for the purpose of relocation, individual trustees must consider the decision to approve or oppose based on all relevant factors, such as sections of the Education Act and board policy that describe the duty of a trustee to ensure financial stewardship, to provide evidence of the effective use of resources, and to ensure the offering and facilitation of programming to meet with the Ministry of Education's standards. Trustees consider the decision in its totality, examining all possible outcomes and impacts to all stakeholders, giving due consideration to public input. As it stands, outreach is intended for students who find that regular school programs and services do not meet their needs. In past years, Alberta Education has provided more funding than they currently do for these programs to encourage high school-age students at risk of dropping out of school or facing various challenges to continue and complete their education, or in some cases to transition successfully from school to work. Based on the data and feedback given, as well as my personal analysis, I am not in support of the closure of the Discovering Choices Start Outreach Bonus Location. During a virtual information session on March 14, 2022, questions were asked about the ability of students at the bonus location to deal with change of any kind. One person pointed out that there was a reason in the past for housing alternative programs outside of a typical high school setting. Although it is understood that students would receive excellent support in transition to a typical high school setting and further accommodations would be made in support of student success, I see change in and of itself as a barrier to some students. I also see the removal of the option to attend high school outside of a typical setting in the northwest quadrant of Calgary as an obstacle. Students could choose to attend any of the other outreach locations, but the commute would likely... Oh, can we stop my timer for a second? My computer just turned off, I'll just be a moment. The commute would likely be a barrier to attendance. Feedback provided to trustees contained significant expression of concern regarding the fact that many current DC bonus students had transitioned out of Robert Thirst High School and would now be expected to attend again. Peer relations, problems, feelings of safety, and fear of anxiety from being in a traditional high school setting were expressed. The projected enrollment of Robert Thirst High School for 2023 is 1,265 students. Even with separate entrances and bell times, students cannot be completely sheltered from this volume of students or the idea of this volume of students, which can be so anxiety-inducing that attendance may be negatively affected. If lunchtime is the peak attendance time for many DC students, then students could be faced with large volume of students occupying common spaces when entering the building as well as students outside the building. I do not wish to see even one student who had previously been set up for success fail to earn their diploma or certificate because of the proposed changes. These barriers cannot be remedied with the current plan to close DC bonus to relocate to Robert Thirst High School, and I urge my colleagues to join me in opposing this motion.
Trustees wishing to enter first round debate? Trustee May?
So financially, our administration has clearly defined cost savings found by moving this program to a current high school site. The yearly reduction of a $184,000 lease along with around $16,000 in custodial security mat rental water is significant to a system that is facing flat funding. It is estimated that per student costs around $1,000 per student in this location, which is an important consideration. At the same time, I'm frustrated with the government grants for these outreach programs has limited funded and limited the amount of locations they fund. We are large diversity and require more than two locations considering our population is 1.3 million. So financially, it seems to be a fairly easy decision to move from an extensive lease, but I find myself challenged as this is not simply moving this community hub to a cheaper lease to be financially prudent, it is moving a unique setting into a traditional high school site. So the premise of Discovering Choices is individualized and flexible programming. Previously, the government recommended these sites be individually housed, and I do not understand the rationale behind the change. And listening to public input, a common theme has been a strong identity to these locations and the value separate locations offer. I'm happy to see a proposed student transition that meets students where they are, but what happens when they cannot succeed with a program within a program and have limited mobility to access the remaining two standalone sites? So taking into consideration bonus, the current enrollment is 168 students, and from the provided graph, Outreach Bonus has steady enrollment since 2012. Moving these students into a traditional high school setting does not seem to honor the intention of this program, and many respondents mentioned they were concerned with their health, CUD, and accessibility at a new site. So Robert Thirst currently has an 85% utilization, is forecasted to stay at that rate well into 2026. I understand maximizing resources and space, but Discovering Choices programs require three times the amount of space. The transition plan has two to four classrooms and will only have sheltered programming for core subjects. The current bonus location does offer sheltered CTS and option classes, and the loss of the sheltered CTS and options in the course load concerns me. In regard to transportation and access, the location is but a 10-minute drive from the current location, but more of a 25-minute bus ride and out of the community. A big part of the value and success of this program is the community, community sports, and partnerships. I do think it's important to consider long-term capital with the CBE, both the weighted moving average and utilization rate impact on financial health and how the government may view them for new schools. We have numerous developing communities who also need new schools and programming in their area.
Trustee Close?
I think I want to speak generally around the due diligence that I took in the process to be ready today to make a decision, and I also want to share right off the bat that I've changed my mind this afternoon. So with gratitude to the questions and how they were answered. So of course, I've read all the materials, I attended all the meetings, and I listened and reflected on what I heard and read. I'm familiar with the great work of Discovering Choices, not only from my time as a previously-elected trustee, but also because of the work of Education Matters and the grants that they have provided directly to Discovering Choices. I've also reviewed our responsibilities outlined in the Education Act and within our own policies, including, and this one will still drive my decision-making in the future, that Section 33, Letter F, that as our role, we collaborate with municipalities, other boards, and community-based service agencies in order to effectively address the needs of all students and manage the use of public resources. That'll become clear why I like that one as a favorite. But I also want to specifically comment on Bruce Sodden's TEDx Calgary talk in November 2014 entitled "Providing Hope" because I think it encapsulates all that is most wonderful about CBE offering the Discovering Choices program for students, and it aptly demonstrates our values. Bruce talked about how we know why people drop out. He talked about poverty, nutrition, housing, addictions, abuse, social economic status of parents. He talked about learning differences and mental health issues. He talked about that hope has been suppressed or taken away, and that often students don't trust adults. And he talked about the solutions that Discovering Choices provides: integrated staff teams, support staff that help meet Maslow's needs, whether it's food, housing, or employment, and psychologists that are doing clinical work, and that all staff are trained in first aid, all trained in suicide prevention, and all have the ability to build relationships with those that are reluctant. And I recognize that that trust has to be established, and the relationships are key. And originally, I was going to say that my hope is that all of our schools will have these integrated staff teams, and I think we are well on our way to having this happen. I have tremendous confidence in our education plan, in the Equity Index model, and in the work in support of being anti-racist, and in the work of supportive equity and well-being. I have appreciated the questions that trustees have asked, I've also appreciated the recommendations and analysis that administration has provided. And although earlier I was struggling because I thought I couldn't support the recommendation to relocate the bonus location, because I do believe that there is something about the immediate vicinity, I believe I can support it today as a result of the questions and how they've been answered, because I know that staff will follow these kids and meet their needs and meet the transition, and that as a system, we're probably going to be better for it to have the continuum. And I will respond to further thoughts of what has grabbed me emotionally and why this is such an important decision today, but I really appreciate the process that we've gone through.
Trustee Dennis?
Thank you so much Chair. So first of all, I would like to extend my gratitude to everyone who participated in the feedback opportunities that were provided in relation to this closure for purpose of relocation. Your input is important, and it forms an important part of the factors that the board needs to consider. I'd also like to thank administration for the tremendous work that you did in bringing this recommendation forward to us today and for the answers to all of our questions. Everything that happened in today's meeting has solidified where I'm going to go with this motion. It is clear to me that every factor in this recommendation from administration has been thoughtfully and thoroughly considered, even with significant funding envelope changes further complicated by flat funding for a growing system and the necessity for our entire system to adjust service levels to fit within the funding we receive. It is clear that the impact to students have been considered first and foremost in this recommendation from administration. If we were to consider this a decision that is financial-only, the decision would be easy and crystal clear, but this decision is about more than finances. It is also about how we exercise our commitment to supporting each and every student to achieve success, and that's every student across the system, with the ultimate goal of having them graduate from high school. In both written and in-person feedback, it is clear that relationships are of critical importance to the success of these students. We have heard from administration through their answers to our questions, and the reports brought before the board and during the public input meetings, that staff would be following the students to the new locations, ensuring that those important relationships would not be lost. Students have spoken, and they have identified that flexibility in timetableing and attendance is essential. They come to Discovering Choices with challenges and responsibilities that simply don't allow them to attend school on a traditional timetable, or in many cases, on a daily basis. We have clearly heard that there is a commitment to ensuring that flexibility in timetableing for these students also will not be lost. Students have identified that they need access to varied programming in support of high school completion. Whether students are seeking a high school diploma, completion of credits, not only this will this relocation still allow for maximum flexibility in programming, it also has been demonstrated that there will be increased access to a variety of programs and opportunities. It is true that not all students will take advantage of those increased opportunities, but I'm very excited that they will have the opportunity to do so should they desire. So flexible programming will not be lost, and in fact, it will be more readily available for those students that want it, and that's a very good thing. Students are looking for a place to call their own. Having high school programming offered in a sheltered environment is part of what has attracted them to Discovering Choices. Administration has been very clear in their commitment that Discovering Choices will have their own space in their new locations. a sheltered approach. How much time do I have left? Okay. These are only a few examples, but it is evident that a change in address does not signal a loss of the core values and principles that make Discovering Choices the right place for these students. And I'll run out of time if I keep going.
I'll get in on a first round of debate here. Our mission states that each student, in keeping with their individual abilities and gifts, will complete high school with the foundation of learning necessary to thrive in life, work, and continued learning. I heard from current students, graduates, parents of students, and invested community members that moving this program location would be detrimental to a student's physical, mental, and academic well-being and achievement. Physical, because we heard many of the students in the program are driven to school, and they would be unable to take transit for health or physical reasons to access those other sites. There's also a risk to health that is heightened by physically being in the same location as that many other students in the high school site at the same time. I struggle with this relocation choice in my mind as an acceptable option for these students, but please know that I have no doubts in my mind what staff can control in the classroom and the amazing relationships they have and that are being developed constantly. It's the exterior factors that worry me. OE 9.5 states that CBE will ensure that financially significant improvements, acquisition, disposal of incumbents, or real property are in support of student learning. It is estimated that 184,500 will be saved if the board moves forward with this closure, and I'm going to disagree with my colleagues that I don't see that as financially significant in my mind in a $1.3 billion corporation for what we may potentially lose, which is students graduating, so I'm trying to balance those. At the BONAS location, there are currently 168 students enrolled. The cost to the general public has a potential to be significantly higher than if an individual doesn't have a grade 12 education or has transitioned to work. I stand by our values and missions. Many of the students or past students who spoke to us saying this program location changed the trajectory of their life. These students graduate. I'm inclined to vote against, but I'm still listening.
Trustee is wishing to enter second round of debate. Trustee May?
So overall, the decision is for the system as a whole. I think back to our mission that each student, keeping with their individual abilities and gifts, will complete high school with the foundation of learning necessary to thrive in work, life, and continued learning. I am satisfied that administration and the Board of Trustees met the requirements under our board policy and with Alberta Education, but ultimately, it is a possible unintended consequences of moving these unique setting programs. This program is the reason that every student has the opportunity and tools to graduate high school in our city. It is each student, every day, no exceptions.
I actually can easily share the notes I had for not voting in support of this recommendation because it works both ways. And I think we should always struggle with these decisions because when students make choices, you want to honor the choices that they make. And no one is debating the quality of the Discovering Choices program today, nor are we losing it. What I've heard this afternoon is that we are trying to augment it and provide that continuum, and in fact, that's what excites me, is the ability to, and why I asked the questions earlier of, who tracks dropout rates? Who talks about high school completion? Because we should be talking about it in kindergarten, and in grade seven, and in grade 10, and grade 11, not just when students choose to be able to come back. So other values that have influenced my thinking are obviously CBE values of excellence and achievement, equity, access, and choice, and of course, well-being. I additionally always try my best to think systemically, but with the person and their family at the center of the problems that we're solving, and it's the stories that can and should influence the necessary changes school systems need to make in order to fulfill the mantra of student success, each and every student, every day. I would have said that we probably need to delay and build that trust and relationship before moving a program like this back into a high school, but now I've been convinced that we have to take a stand and move forward and take action in support of student success. I love the idea that our existing high school buildings would be able to accommodate a student that just comes for an hour, and that they're working elsewhere, and that they come at a time that's convenient to them. That's a huge change. I love the idea that we would have more wraparound services maybe available to other kids. I need to emphasize that, you know, financial impact has been mentioned quite often, and utilization rates, and this is not going to be a surprise to anyone in this room, but these are not the areas that grab my heart or head. It's how we honor student success, how we meet their needs, what does that space and culture look like in the program that they need in order to be successful. And I've been convinced today that those outcomes will be met, not easily, but they will be met. So I so appreciate that the proposals include a year of understanding and supporting transitions. This is a very thoughtful plan. As I mentioned already, I know that we're not debating the program. The program is successful and it's necessary. We're actually debating the locations. And I think as a whole school system, we have to create those necessary relationships so that every student has someone that they can rely on, and that they will graduate, and we have to take action in support of that. We also have to work with community service agencies so that we can effectively address those needs. And so back to that Education Act 33-F, that just grabs my heart all the time because I would have said originally that why aren't we housing this program within a community service agency? And we actually heard this afternoon that that's where one of them started, was in the Boys and Girls Club. So I still think that if this motion fails, that as a system, we could be exploring how to save costs and public dollars with other organizations, because I do think that as an organization, as a public institution, serving public, the common good, we have to find a way to also work with others to support our purpose of that learning is our central purpose, because I don't see that as a requirement that we have to work alone. So I will be supporting the motion to close. Not an easy decision by any means. I think this is going to be hard work going forward, but I think it's important work for our whole school system and for our, each individual students.
Trustee is wishing to enter second round. Trustee Dennis?
Thank you. So I fully acknowledge that change is difficult, and I am pleased to see that thorough and thoughtful transition plans are in place. Students and families will have the opportunity to visit the new sites. Students will have a choice of sites. Intake and enrollment values will not change, and there is time. This transition will not occur till over a year from now, and in the meantime, students will have the opportunity to collaborate and share their best thinking on what Discovering Choices could look like in a new location. This is a truly unique opportunity that will not only allow them to shape Discovering Choices for years to come, but will also give them the opportunity to stretch their own leadership muscles. This change is happening with them, not to them. And we do need to talk about dollars, because dollars are important too. Supporting this motion will allow administration to do the important work of developing the best transition possible in support of student success, rather than focusing on where they will pull money from in order to keep the program in a location that we simply cannot afford, or to have to spend time on bringing another closure back to us because these leases are ending. We've seen a very successful closure for the purposes of relocation already take place in northeast Calgary. Lower facility costs means more funding to directly support students. That is an undisputable fact. As we continue to offer programs, supports, and services within the funding we receive, very difficult decisions continue to be made. The budget passed by the Board of Trustees over the last few years has been a testament to that. We've eliminated almost all preschool programs because we are no longer funded for them and could no longer find the funding to keep them open. We have reduced English language supports from seven years to five years to align with government funding, this after a number of years of maintaining those additional two years of supports without the funding to do so. We are cutting back our funding to Education Matters, and discretionary budgets have disappeared. We are making financial decisions in the tens of thousands of dollars, and that should tell us all something about our reality when we have a $1.3 billion budget. And finally, OE 3 instructional program. It's planned for and provide rigorous, relevant, and high-quality programming opportunities that consider the educational needs of students, the choices of students and families, and the long-term fiscal and operational capacity of the organization. Administration has followed our lead on this. They have clearly demonstrated their intention to continue to provide programming considering the unique challenges of this particular group of students, while also considering the long-term financial and operational capacity of the organization. The recommendation is fair, it is equitable, and a thoughtful approach that falls fully in line with what we expect of them. This is a policy of the Board of Trustees, not an administrative policy. We have asked them to do this work. This is work that has been delegated to the Chief Superintendent. We have been clear about what our expectations are, and they have followed through on those expectations by delivering this recommendation to us. I would ask the trustees who hopefully have kept an open mind in today's conversation, that they've heard the debate coming from the other side of the table, that you would reconsider your decision to vote against this motion, that you would use this motion as a vote of confidence towards administration, that you would use it as a way to provide a level of certainty to the students that attend the BONAS location so that they again do not have hanging over their head the possibility of losing their site because the lease is expiring and the building owner is looking to sell the building. So let's give them an opportunity to find a long-term home for their program, and an opportunity for them as the students to lead the way in developing what that program looks like in that location.
Utilization rates that determine funding levels from the provincial government create many challenges for our system and many of our schools. Although the proposed change, if implemented, would see a positive increase in utilization rates at Robert Thirst High School, I do not believe that the increase is significant enough to pursue this plan. I believe the remedy that is needed here is a commitment by Alberta Education to fully fund outreach in locations outside of a typical high school setting. It has been proposed that students would enjoy the ability to attend options that are not currently available to them. In the online survey of March 2nd to 17th, 2022, option choices ranked lowest on criteria of importance to current students. It is also my understanding that outreach students are often working towards completing core subjects that they do not currently, and that they do currently have options available to them, some at the BONAS location and others accessed elsewhere. I'd like to share further evidence to the information I gave in my previous debate by relaying feedback from students, parents, and caregivers in the online survey of March 2nd to 17th, 2022, which is available publicly on the CBE website. Will we be promised to be away from other students? For many students, the main thing we love about the school we are at, at the moment, is that we are no longer with thousands of students. My child does not want to attend if Discovering Choices gets moved to a regular high school. A regular high school is large and busy, which creates anxiety for my child. My child likes the smaller building with fewer students and the flexibility and support DC offers. I'm a little concerned as I recently moved my child out of a high school environment for a less stressful and more supportive one, so putting my child right back there defeats the purpose of moving in the first place. The issues that were identified in the above statements were reiterated in high frequency in the communications received by trustees. Equity here, I think, applies to giving these students the best chance, and I believe that that would be compromised by putting them into a regular high school setting. I urge my fellow trustees to consider this information as they decide if they will support a motion that moves DC BONAS into a traditional high school setting with the possibility that it may not serve students as well as the current location does.
Trustee Bukidovic, do you wish to close?
Through the chair. I'm not opposed to change. I'm not opposed to relocating these two sites. I have high confidence in our administration, and I understand the need for fiscal responsibility. The financial aspect of this decision is not to be taken lightly. From the information in the reports, I see that the provincial government never fully funded the CBE's costs of operating our four outreach locations. The CBE was making up for a $300,000 provincial government funding shortfall before the 2020-21 school year. But layered on to this, the provincial funding for outreach programs changed for the 2020-21 school year, which resulted in an additional $100,000 provincial government funding reduction to our outreach high schools in 2021, which means that the provincial government is now funding only $150,000 of the over $550,000 in lease costs, and the CBE has to make up for a $400,000 annual shortfall in funding from the provincial government by taking it from other important areas. With this significant shortfall in funding, the cost to operate the program at all four locations exceeds the provincial government funding the CBE receives to an even greater degree than it did before. I see that we could save nearly $200,000 per year by relocating the start BONAS location for the purpose of co-locating it with our existing Robert Thirst High School, and that is a lot of money that could pay for several behavior support workers and speech pathologists and teachers. Anyone who is at a school that has lost their last remaining behavior support worker due to provincial government budget cuts, or who has 39 kids in a grade nine classroom due to those same budget cuts, would understand that we're at a point that every additional staff member we can afford to keep for our classrooms matters. I can appreciate that our provincial government has tough decisions to make when it comes to determining where to allocate scarce taxpayer dollars, but the reality is that the per-student funding cut by the provincial government is being felt by our CBE families in terms of larger class sizes and fewer supports, and I know that even though $300,000 represents a small proportion of the CBE's overall budget, we are in a position where every dollar counts. So I do find the $300,000 savings to be a compelling reason to relocate these two locations. However, after looking at all of the variables present before us and listening to the debate, I am inclined to vote against this motion. It's hard for me to support this motion when I'm not convinced that the two proposed relocation It's hard for me to support this motion when I'm not convinced that the two proposed relocation locations are the best fit for our outreach high school students. There are six reasons why I am not convinced that the proposed new locations are the best fit, and let's see how far I can get in my monologue before my five minutes are up. One reason why it sounds like Robert Thirst may not be a good fit is because, as numerous stakeholders have said, these youth left a traditional high school setting for a reason, and providing them with a unique learning environment has proven to be more successful. One person wrote, "The Calgary Board of Education already has specialized programming within traditional schools, and Discovering Choices frequently register students who were not successful in these programs." Another person wrote, "Outreach has always been a separate entity because that is the only proven design that is effective." Moreover, in one letter I received, a parent told me that when Red Deer moved their outreach from commercial leases to high schools, the program was significantly negatively impacted. It sounds to me, from what I'm hearing, that outreach only works when it is in a dedicated space and not presented as a school within a school format. A second reason why Robert Thirst may not be a good fit is because of the higher vulnerability and anxiety of outreach students. For example, one stakeholder wrote to say, "Do not move students into a regular high school with their own special space. This will make students feel alienated in their own space as they have to go to their specialized program. As young people, the anxiety of being differed or being seen as stupid is extremely stress-inducing. Having to see our peers go into a regular system could be embarrassing for some students." A third reason why Robert Thirst may not be a good fit is the temptation of larger high schools that outreach students... You'll have to wait for... Oh, I can keep going? How exciting. A third reason is the temptation of larger high schools that outreach students might find more challenging to resist. One stakeholder wrote, "If I know that my friends are right next door and they have a break, nine times out of 10, I would leave class to join them. Or if they know that my high school schedule is extremely flexible, they are more likely to skip their classes and leave school." A fourth reason pertains to the transportation accessibility of both locations. Robert Thirst has LRT access but not from the community of Bowness, where we know there is no LRT, and many students who are in need of alternative high school programming. Also, alternative high school has bus access but no LRT access. A fifth reason why Robert Thirst may not be a good fit is because of the distance of this school from the basic needs of students, such as foods. Many of our outreach students may be in a very transient phase in their lives. Some students no longer live at home and do not have the means to dress warmly on cold days. One stakeholder wrote, "As someone who fell under this category and solely relied on public transit for over a decade, I recall having to wait up to an hour for a bus on snowy days. These were miserable experiences, and I can easily see less dedicated students giving up and not attending schools on those days. Furthermore, the proximity to Safeway, Walmart, and numerous food options is of utmost importance to the school's population. I know I appreciated being able to get something for lunch or to bring groceries home without having to walk many additional blocks to meet this basic need." And a sixth reason revolves around... Oh, no. Okay, next time. Next time, you'll get my sixth reason.
I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is, trustee's close, and trustee Dennis. Those opposed? Trustee May, trustee Downey, trustee Bukedinovich, trustee Hack. The motion is defeated. Are there any additional motions on the report? Trustee Dennis?
Thank you. That the Board of Trustees approves the closure of the Discovering Choices Westbrook Outreach Program effective June 30, 2023 for the purpose of relocation.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the closure of Discovering Choices Westbrook Outreach Program effective June 30, 2023 for the purpose of relocation. Trustee Dennis, would you please open debate?
Sure, thank you. So again, I appreciate the words and thoughts of the students, staff members, and the public who participated in the survey, public input meetings, and wrote the Board of Trustees with their thoughts. Again, your input is a valuable contribution to the many factors that the Board of Trustees must consider when making a decision of this nature. If all the Board of Trustees had to do was consider the financial impact of the decision, that reason would be compelling, but it is all of the other information that administration has provided and how it aligns with what students have identified is important to them that allows me to say with confidence that I am fulfilling my fiduciary duty as I support this motion. All of the reasons I indicated in my first rounds of debate regarding Bowness also apply here around, you know, relationships, flexible timetableing, varied programming, and a space to call of their own, so I won't go through all of those again. But when you look at the response from students, the things that they indicate that are the most important to them are flexible timetableing, flexible attendance, high school completion, flexible programming, and well-being supports. All of those things can and will be offered at the alternative high school location. When students were asked in the survey what their preferred location would be starting in 2024, they responded to, say, "Alternative high school." And why is it important to listen to the kids? Based on the data, they are making an informed decision. They understand. They know that they will have influence on what the transition will look like, and so let's give them that opportunity. The students are very good at telling us what they need. I wondered about transportation because the existing site has a desirable access to transportation. However, I was aptly reminded in reading the reports that alternative high school students who come from around the city do successfully travel to school every day and have several options to do so, which includes biking, walking, car, and of course, transit. As mentioned in the Westbrook responses, these students require an effective learning space and the learning supports they currently receive to be successful, and they are getting exactly what they are looking for in this relocation. This is an intentional effort by our administration to keep this program open and available for students. It is clear that CBE's commitment to these students is steadfast. Equity matters, and success for each student matters. It is no secret that as an individual trustee, equity and success for every student, regardless of their background, economic status, or other personal circumstances, are vitally important to me. I also see that the decision to relocate these programs is a testament to CBE's commitment to equity and success for each student. I know how valuable these programs are because I know personally students who have accessed Discovering Choices to complete high school. We have long funded programs and services beyond what our grants would allow for. That is a luxury we can no longer afford. In a world of flat funding, growing enrollment, and ever-increasing complexity, we are forced to consider every avenue in front of us in terms of how we can operate within our means and maximize every single dollar that we spend. The public expects us to operate this way, and the government also expects us to operate this way. We are hearing from educators and families that their children need more supports, not less. Spending money on leases we can no longer afford and that we frankly no longer need is irresponsible spending, and it's taking money away from where it's needed most. Grant Thornton did a financial cost management review of the board not long ago, and the CBE board was openly, and I believe fairly criticized, for not making a decision that would have provided an opportunity to save costs and potentially improve educational outcomes for students. And I quote, "An opportunity to both save costs and potentially improve educational outcomes was presented to the board by management for approval, given that it related to a potential school closure."
Trustees wishing to enter first round of debate?
In terms of public input and students choosing alternative high school as their preferred location, the question that was posed to students in a survey, which the results are publicly available on the CBE website, this question was phrased, "If the Board of Trustees approves moving to Discovering Choices locations, which location would be your preferred location in 2023-24?" So the question was posed out of the options we are presenting to you, not "if we should move you from your current site," or an open-ended question about how you would like that to look or if you would like that. So I'd like to offer that. Also, the 2021-22 enrollment of Westbrook Outreach is 206 students. The projected enrollment of alternative high school where it is proposed Westbrook students move to in the 2023-24 school year is 103 students. Outreach students are designated three times more space than typical high school students. The utilization rate for alternative high school is projected to be at 114% in 2023 with the addition of Westbrook Outreach students. Tripling the enrollment at alternative high school, a building that was designed originally as an elementary school, is bound to create significant impact on the current students of alternative high school and how the school building is currently used to meet their needs. Outreach students are designated more space because they need access to breakout rooms and other areas that support mental health. Based on these facts, I feel that bringing Westbrook Outreach students to alternative high school may not serve either population well, and I urge my colleagues to join me in opposing this motion.
Trustee Close?
I'll be brief. I've said everything in the first round, but ironically, this is one I did not struggle to support at all. And the factor that convinced me was in our April 26 report that we received when we were considering whether to consider public input. Under the section of "Hearing from affected communities," I quote, it says, "At alternative high school, the staff, students, and parent community are pleased that their school will remain open and operating into the future." So this is a school that actually feels under the gun for whatever reason, whether we talk about utilization or system student accommodation planning and are willing to welcome and support the transition of the program into their building, which I think we have also heard will be able to be accommodated just because of the way that program works on a day-to-day basis and how many people are in the building and how many people are not and when they are. So I did not struggle with this particular school closure recommendation. I can support it. It was the other one that I was struggling with and was convinced otherwise through the debate and through the administration questions and answers.
Just kind of based on where alternative high school is. So again, our mission is that each student will complete high school with the foundation of learning necessary in life to thrive and... Foundation of learning necessary to thrive in life, work, and continue learning. This outreach program is a success of CBE's mission beyond a regular high school setting. I think in regards to the Grant Thornton report and school closure, I would argue that this closure is different than an elementary school. These are students at risk of dropping out or facing various challenges to continue and complete their education. The movement of the standalone lease to a high school has significant yearly cost savings. I went through this with my previous debate, but the cost per student at this site is $644, and the yearly lease is $132,000. I still struggle with the change in government regulations, changes that affect both funding and requirements to house separately. I think it's a disservice that we now receive a fixed grant that totals $150,000, while previously we received per site for a total of $250,000. I am pleased to see detailed and thoughtful implementation timelines. Having a full year to transition staff, students, and family will be incredibly necessary. Any change is hard, and this will be monumental for currently enrolled students. I'm also pleased that administration used our planning principles in mind. I know we cannot aim to fill all principles, but this recommendation does help us to use space and resources effectively and provide long-term sustainability since they are standalone high schools and not leases. But I am concerned with the move of Westgate to alternate high school for all students in both programs. Westgate has an attendance of 206 students. Alternative High School has an estimated 103 students in 2023. Westbrook enrollment will now have a possibility of exceeding the enrollment of alternative high school students. It is stated that they expect only 50 to 60 students at each location every day, but that is still an increase and change to the layout and functioning of this unique school. This site location does now more fit into the theory that we have a Discovering Choices site in each of the city quadrants. I would be amiss if I also didn't point out that the downtown location being considered southeast is a bit of a stretch for many deep south communities. Alternative High does have more of a southwest location but does lack LRT access, which was a repeated concern for students and families. The report states current students who will attend alternative high school come from all over the city and many successfully use transit to get to and from. But just because it is successful does not mean it's barrier-free. This new location is moving away from my site with LRT access, and I do have concerns
Trustee Bukedinovich?
I'll just weigh in with the debate on Grant Thornton. I mean, reading the report, it says CBE is currently on the higher end of efficiencies as compared to other school jurisdictions. So really, the Grant Thornton report that set out to find ways that the CBE could be more efficient, they struggled to find ways, space places. And of course, every system has space for continual improvement and improvement, and they found a few, but man, they had to look, and the dollar amount of what they found, it did not come close to meeting, to making up for the budget cut that we have received in per-student funding. So to me, the Grant Thornton report actually speaks to how efficient the CBE is. And in terms of the school that they recommended closing, I mean, I understand, we have a $132,000 lease at Westbrook Mall location that's two blocks away from the school that Grant Thornton report we recommended closing, and it's not one we consider here now, and it would be an interesting way to save costs if we could consider it. In terms of the sixth reason why I feel like the location... I mentioned in the previous debate that the locations that are being considered, that that is where I hesitate to support administration's recommendation. And again, that's not something I take lightly because I have deep respect for administration, and when you guys put in the work to bring forward a recommendation, I understand the value that you bring, the expertise that you bring to the table, and so it's not easy for me to lean towards voting against one of your recommendations. But as I said in the previous debate, there are six reasons why I'm concerned about the locations, and it stands as well for this idea of moving the Westbrook location to alternative. So again, that students have left a traditional high school setting for a reason. There's the higher vulnerability and anxiety about reach students, which is why they need unique settings. There's the temptation that the larger high schools present, and I know alternative is not that large of a high school, but it is right next door to Central Memorial High School. A fourth reason pertains to the transportation accessibility of alternative high school because there's no LRT access to that high school. Fifth one is that around alternative high school, there aren't basic needs that students can find, and many of the students who attend outreach high schools, they live alone, they don't have those extended family supports, and so things like having a grocery store nearby, that's vital to some of these students, or not having to walk in a minus-30-degree snowstorm, walk too far, that's vital for them. And again, in one of those horrible snowstorms we get in the winter, we know that LRT is more easy to rely on than a bus. A bus might not come when it's that cold or when there's a winter storm. And so now getting to my sixth reason that I didn't get to in my previous debate about And so now getting to my sixth reason that I didn't get to in my previous debate about why the locations that are being considered in this case give me pause, revolves around the size of school best suited for this population of students. So some students thrive in larger high schools, some students thrive in medium high schools, some students thrive in very small high schools. And the reason why the CBE is the number one choice of families in Calgary is because we serve the needs of our diverse learners with a variety of options. Unlike charter schools that offer one-size-fits-all niche offerings, I am proud that the CBE, we offer learning as unique as every student, and that includes a variety of high school sizes. As one stakeholder wrote, "The smaller school community is of great significance to many students. High schools are often overwhelming by nature, especially for students who are struggling with their academic or personal lives. The smaller size of Westbrook Outreach allows these students to feel safe, seen, and heard. I greatly appreciated how I was able to attend school without fear of judgment from other students who were in the building."
I appreciate what my colleagues have brought forward and recognize where their heads are at. The Westbrook location for me was a completely different mind switch in a couple of factors, being the LRT, being funding and what that is per student, and programming access that they currently have. So it was noted that in one of the letters that we received, that over 25% of the students attending these four programs are indigenous. If we're to believe those numbers accurate and compare those to the less than 5% of self-identified indigenous students who attend CBE as a whole, it's over five times the number disproportionately affected by the decision that we make here today. Please take a moment and let that sink in on National Indigenous Peoples' Day. I recognize we are in flat funding, but we talk about equity as a system. It's time to put some money where our mouths are. I struggle to support this, especially if our biggest arguments are access to the LRT system or funding and who we support. The Westbrook location currently supports 206 students, and it leads me thinking forward. After the last couple of years, we've had many more students who will be possibly in need of programming like this. The question for me is how much is a student's education worth? How would this effect change CBE, the students by extension their families, and the students' overall futures? The proposed move would be at a lease savings of just shy of $133,000 a year, which is, as pointed out before, $644 per student per year. These students aren't missing out on anything and currently have access to much of the traditional programming offered out of surrounding public high schools, provided that's even a choice they want to explore. I've heard from staff, students, and families on why this relocation would be disadvantageous to student success and well-being. The program where it is located offers a sheltered site where students feel safe, and is currently accessible through LRT, and have other amenities close by. The relocation draws into question access, safety, mental health challenges, and stigma challenges, among other things, as was pointed out. I don't have confidence this is the best decision to support students, which should be at the crux of every public education decision made. I can say with confidence, if we vote against this relocation, that we're using public dollars for public good.
Trustee is wishing to enter second round of debate. Trustee Close, go ahead.
I just want to share my appreciation for everyone's debate and their focus and their support for student success. And I remain convinced that as a school system and as an individual trustee, my focus is still on that same student success. That as I listen to some of the debate, what still resonates for me is the need to provide a continuum of programs. We are not closing Discovering Choices. We are maintaining it and potentially improving it even so it can be even better. And it's a pretty phenomenal program that is well lauded and supported. So I recognize some of the challenges and some of the points that have been made, and continue to support this recommendation, as difficult as it is. Because it is. This is not an easy decision for any one of us to make.
Trustee is wishing to enter second round. Trustee Downey?
I think it's really important to listen to the people who have taken the time to provide feedback for us. And I think we're aware that people who work with at-risk youth absolutely identify change as a barrier at times. And as a person who has worked with at-risk youth for many, many years as well, and have tried to track students down to get them to come into a traditional high school setting, I know that there are those that just can't do it, and usually it's due to anxiety. So for the reasons that I gave in my previous debate around change and barriers, which are very real, even the perception that students might be congregating outside a school, and I will have to walk past those doors to get into my school, that is a very real fear for many students. And I have seen that play out and affect student attendance very negatively. And trustee Vukadinevich has also brought out the peer situation in Red Deer, which I would really look at to inform us on this decision where outreach programs moved into traditional high school settings were not successful. So I would like my fellow trustees to really think about that as they consider this motion. Thank you.
Trustee May, go ahead.
So I understand it is our job as governors of the system to be responsible stewards of our resources. I appreciate the recommendation from administration. I also understand that for CBE as a system overall, we benefit having an 85% utilization with our three-year request, as well as major modernization requests with our submission to Alberta Education. But Alberta Education does provide funding for outreach, and these programs encourage high school students at risk of dropping out or facing various challenges to continue and complete their education. I continue to struggle why the government funding for unique settings has changed and decreased, considering the importance of reporting five-year high school completion rates and high school dropout rates. Ultimately, I cannot support a motion that has the possibility to decrease access for our most vulnerable, especially now after years of uncertainty with a pandemic. If we do not properly fund, do not properly house, and reduce the opportunity to meet students where they are, we all ultimately lose out.
I'll enter here. I really do appreciate where everyone's heads are at, and I don't want to discount the immense amount of work that administration has put in to bring these forward and to look at different options. This debate has given me insight on differences and who we are here representing within the city, and I'm grateful for this and the points made by my colleagues. You've given me a lot to think about. Thank you.
Trustee Dennis, will you please close debate?
Thank you, I will. So I'll finish what I was saying about the Grant Thornton review. And so in April of 2019, the board decided to vote down management's recommendation to close the school. And then after two years of administration pouring money into the school, which kept funds from being able to support an even broader number of students, the board made things right by deciding to close the school. And the situation was remarkably similar to the one that's in front of us today. It was about driving more dollars to classrooms and not spending it on buildings and facilities that we didn't need. And it was about increasing opportunities for students because there were greater opportunities for the students from that school to attend schools just outside of their community or not far from their community. So here again, we are simply in a lease that we can no longer afford. A vote in support of this motion is not a closure of the program. It is not an elimination of services. And frankly, it's not even enough to ensure that we are living within our means. But what is it? It's a vote in support of equity. It's a vote in support of enhancing services and providing a continuum of supports to students who desperately need them. And why would we spend dollars on a building when we could spend dollars on students and the supports that they need? It's also a vote of confidence in our administration and the due diligence they did to bring this before us today. It was abundantly clear that they considered every possible factor, and they did keep students and students' needs and students' success in the forefront of this recommendation. And as a Board of Trustees, it's a demonstration that we are indeed considering the entire system when we make this decision, that we are being good stewards of our resources. Sharing spaces is a demonstration of good stewardship, and we have an opportunity to do that here in a way that will be successful and safe for these students. And I prefer to share our spaces with other programs in our own system rather than leaving spaces open to share with others that might not have the same values that we do. So when I considered my decisions on these motions, I mean, I asked myself many questions. But one of the things, we serve Calgarians. And so I said to myself, if I were to, if just the common Calgarian were to have all of the same information that I have, and hear all of the things that I've heard, read all the things that I've read, would they look at me and say, "You have made a fair and reasonable decision based on the information that you have," and frankly, based on the oath that I took? So I will be supporting this motion because I believe it's the right thing for the students involved. I believe that it's the right thing for the system as a whole, as we continue to be thoughtful and careful about how we spend our dollars and how we invest them, while also still being deeply, deeply committed to supporting students, meeting them where they are at, and helping them to be successful.
I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion, that is, trustee Close, trustee Dennis. Those opposed, that is, trustees May, trustee Downey, trustee Vukadinevich, and trustee Hack. The motion is defeated. That brings us to the consent agenda of our meeting. All items not removed from the consent agenda will be deemed to be approved with the agenda. The board has one legal, two labor, six land, and five strategic planning matters to deal with in camera following the public portion of this meeting. That brings us to the conclusion of the portions of this agenda. I'd like to thank all of you who joined us for our last board meeting of the 2021-2022 school year. Our next public board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 27, 2022. We wish everyone a safe, fun summer and look forward to seeing students and staff in the fall.